That's a new one.
You brought a good sort of party.
What's that?
This one's party.
No, 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 that's the luncheon.
Oh, the luncheon.
That's the luncheon.
No, uh, there was a holiday home that came in the email yesterday.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, that's the luncheon.
Honey, seasonings.
Oh. Should be the luncheon.
Yeah.
I don't know, during the day, I can't do it.
Because normally it's the board goes out with just the board.
And no, spouses. Get them caught.
Hit it again.
By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Contra Hocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. We did have a regular public, before the regular public meeting, there was a special meeting to interview Boarding Commission reappointments at 6:00 PM. The first item on the agenda is recognition of service for an EAC member, Matt Breidenstein. If you could come up, please, we're in.
He's out in the hallway.
He's out in the hallway.
Hello, again.
Good evening, Matt.
Good evening. Hi.
You can do your presentation.
I'm doing my presentation, sure, okay. Is, um, let me grab Debbie. Is she here?
Yeah, Jen, right here.
Oh, come on. So, um, you know, we're here to recognize a member of the EAC who, um, I believe, I think we all believe, has been pretty instrumental. And her term is ending, and she's going to be moving to Westchester. So, we want to congratulate her with that. But I do have some, a few words. On behalf of the members of the EAC, I just want to thank you, Debbie, for your outstanding service to the borough as a member of the EAC. And it is evident that the appointing you to this council was a excellent decision by this council. You're instrumental in getting the Friends of Green Contry off the ground, and it's because of this program, we are able to take on additional projects and activities. It wouldn't be, you know, without Friends of Green Contry, without you spearheading that, we wouldn't have the Shade Tree team, we wouldn't have our tree plantings, we wouldn't be doing the workshops that we're doing. And you've been just an amazing advocate for us in that sense. You've been the public face of our community. I used to do the social media, and we had like 50 members, and then when you jumped on it, we've exploded with that. And we started an Instagram account. Because of your efforts, we're able to get out to the community, we're able to educate, we're able to raise awareness, and grow our membership, and that's all because of you. So, no doubt, your efforts have made a huge impact on our mission. I want to thank you so much for all you've done. We've, uh, we have a plaque for you.
Thank you.
And the plaque says, "In recognition, Deborah Malone, for your outstanding service and dedication to the Borough of Contra Hocken as appointed member of the Environmental Advisory Council."
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the presentation on the creation of an energy task force for the EAC. Eliza?
Yep. Hello, council members. So, my name is Elisa Lanzuti, and I'm a member of the Environmental Advisory Council. I'm here tonight to present a resolution that the EAC have drafted for your consideration with regards to the creation of an energy task force. As you know, in the past, uh, the past June, you voted and approved a resolution to support the Borough vision for a 100% clean and renewable energy future. In that document, we committed to come up with an energy transition plan in the next two years, starting from January 2020. And it was also mentioned, uh, the creation of an energy task force to achieve such an important goal. We believe the first milestone for our community to move the first step from our vision definition to the actual change is the creation of the energy task force. This energy task force will serve as a recommending body to the Borough Council. It will coordinate a significant analysis of the borough's current, uh, current energy user, usage, rules and regulations, and specific features, um, and local potentials. And, um, we will draft, uh, the energy transition plan with the assistance of an energy planner, and incorporate feedbacks from any borough stakeholders, and, um, property owners, borough businesses, uh, and elected appointed officials. The task force, um, shall consist of local stakeholders, and we have, um, made a recommendation for, um, types of roles that we might benefit of having, of having in our task force. Um, and that is, uh, a number of three members of the EAC, uh, one member of the Borough Council, one member of the Planning Commission, um, three borough stakeholders, just general residents, and at least one person with, um, an energy background, like, uh, an engineer or a person who has a technical expertise. So, the total number of people in this task force will be between seven and nine members. And we would like to involve, um, existing, uh, the Borough Council and Planning Commission, just because we really feel is in the interest of this task force to have, uh, a connection with any aspect of our community and what is going on in terms of decision and impact on other aspects that we might have to evaluate. So, um, I'm available to answer any question you might have. I think you were provided with the draft of this document, and, um, I can provide you, um, any additional details, like, um, uh, the task force will report monthly to the EAC and quarterly, uh, to the Borough Council, and, um, it will be, um, it will be, uh, it will start from January 2020, or as soon as you will be able to vote on this regard, and serve for two years, and that should match the timeframe that we have available for the creation of the task, of the energy transition plan.
So, how many members are you going to have on this task force?
Uh, we drafted nine. That is, uh, the number we would like to have. If that is, um, a too big number, uh, we'd like to have at least seven.
I'm a little, um, yeah, confused on why you think it's important to have a member of the Planning Commission on the environmental.
Because we, so, the energy transition planning might involve actions like, um, promoting some ordinances, or promoting some other, um, documents that might create incentives, uh, on the installation of solar panels, or changes in the overall energy infrastructure. So, we would like to be sure that, uh, we know all the aspects, uh, that we need to consider. And we feel, uh, a member of the Planning Commission, uh, since is, is, might be heavily involved with the decision, current decision, past decision, might be a very good source of information and knowledge for us to make informed decisions and, uh, provide any recommendation on that regard.
Has Borough Administration had a chance, or legal had a chance to go through the ordinance? Because I have a bunch of questions about the ordinance, and I, I don't know if I should start with the questions, or wait till you guys go through them?
No, I think the purpose of this evening, so we've met with the EAC representatives a few times with the generation of the resolution itself, and then moving on to the energy task force, we also have to, had to discuss multiple things with the RF-100, and from a county perspective, and from a borough perspective. So, there are a few items at play here that are going to affect this, one being the county level, which I've discussed with, um, the EAC reps. The County DVRPC and the Montgomery County Consortium of Managers is now involved in the RF-100 Renewable Energy Initiative. The county is potentially taking on more of a spearheading role of this and expanding the scope. So, we're waiting to see what that ends up looking like, um, which will affect whatever we do as a municipality. So, those are some items that we still have to work through. So, I think for purposes of this evening, since we will not be voting on this this month, I think it's beneficial, in order to move the process along, that they hear from you specifically, any questions, any issues that we need to work through. So, yeah, I, yes, I would say, this evening, we can go page by page, work through it that way, and that way, the next conversation that we have from an administrative and a legal perspective, we have your feedback.
So, in response to your Planning Commission, I personally, um, as a member of council, feel like that that is a conflict of interests. You are an advisory committee and should stay in advisory committee, and the two committees should not intertwine.
Okay.
That's my personal opinion on that. Anyone else in council have any?
Well, I would think also that council writes the ordinances, so whatever comes out of that would still have to revert back to us. It wouldn't go through the Planning Commission necessarily first. It would have to come from the advisory committee directly to council.
Okay.
And the Planning Commission also can't, in their consideration, take into account things that you advise, because they're not legally the law. So, it crosses the line, I believe. Am I correct in that, Mike?
Yeah, so, so keep in mind that the Planning Commission has a very limited role, because it's created under the MPC. So, they're talking about zoning in Sado. Some of these ordinances will not be zoning in Sado presumably, so, um, keeping them separate would allow the PC to still provide feedback, if it's within their jurisdiction, without one of the members of the PC also being almost conflicted out because they're on the, just task force. Conflicted out's the wrong word, but you, you know what I mean.
I do, yes.
They can't attend the planning meeting.
Oh, yeah. Right, so, so from my perspective, I think a ten-member task force is too big. A task force should be small, concise, nimble, be able to come up with goals and objectives, and then start executing on, on them. When you have, uh, too many members of a group, that you lose that. Okay. My recommendation would be having a five-to-seven member task force. I think that it would be made up of your EAC members, subject matter expert, which could be an engineer. I think how you bring in people with expertise from planning, from the group, is you look at having ad hoc contributors who would be invited to specific meetings based on the, the subject that you're working on, and that would be how I would handle bringing others into the play, but not necessarily spelling them out as task force members, or voting members, as you had kind of inferred. So, that would be my recommendation from a task force view. Do you want me to keep going? Because I got a list here.
Sure, go ahead.
Sorry. I would go back to the top, and when you're looking at the establishment of duties, when we look at that, the task force doesn't really have powers, so we need to find a softer language that speaks to advisory versus powers. Also, when we're referring to the borough within the resolution, I want to make sure that we spell out the, the one-square-mile borough proper versus borough administration and buildings, because I was looking at it different ways, like, I read it one way, and then I read it another way. So, I want to be clear as to what we're looking at. We're looking at the one-square-mile borough and the things that happen within that versus just borough buildings and, and borough administration, that kind of thing. So, I think it just needs to spell out a little, because we use the word borough interchangeably as, as a community, so I want to make sure we spell that out, how we want to look at it.
So, in this square mile, the borough building will still be included, right?
It would be included, because it's part of the one-square-mile borough, but it wouldn't be that we're only looking at, it's just how we interchange the word borough, and I want to make sure that we spell that out.
Okay.
Under the duties, I think-
So, just can I piggyback on that item?
Sure.
So, one of the, one of the items on my list to discuss for this evening was that concept as well. So, we've already done an energy analysis. I just want to make sure that the task force isn't doing anything that's redundant with what administration has already done, so that, to me, is a waste of resources. So, somewhere that needs to be clear, that there won't be a redundancy in terms of what we, as administration, have been tasked with by you, and what the task force is focusing on, focusing on for the borough as a whole.
So, that information would be available and would come in handy when you're looking at the overall plan from the business perspective?
So, it would be for us analyzing existing documentation available to us?
Yeah, but not, not having to redo it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll keep going.
Um, under duties, I think that we have to, based on what Stephanie, you had mentioned with Montco, that we're not kind of writing this in a vacuum, that we're doing it ourselves and our, the Montgomery County community as a whole isn't working towards it, because we don't want to do anything in a vacuum, especially when there's economies of scale, and I know, you guys know that. So, I want to make sure that whatever it morphs into, but that should not slow us down to get up and started in January, so we could still create some goals and objectives to march towards whatever the, the community, the Montgomery County does. So, it shouldn't slow us down, but we should stay in alignment with that, however we need to word that. Section A, um, under duties, does, and this is probably to Mike, does a task force need to follow Sunshine Act?
Great question. The answer is that it's not entirely clear under the law. My recommendation is that, yes, they always do.
Okay.
So, because they are an advising body to you, yes, my recommendation would be that their meetings are open to the public, and frankly, that may be beneficial for the task force.
Okay. And then, under the B, there's language "is also supposed to facilitate." It's just not really good language in a, a policy or an ordinance, so I would like to do something more direct, not "is supposed to," but "will do," or "will," something that has-
Where, where is that?
That's under section B.
Okay.
Is "also supposed to facilitate." So, we just kind of changed that wording to being more direct language. As far as reporting, uh, you mentioned, "Report monthly to the EAC, quarterly to the council." I think it's important that it gets reported initially, monthly to the council. We want to be there to support the efforts. You know, we can change our mind down the road, but I would think that to get up and running and to see what needs you have, we, we can help facilitate that. So, um, it, I would say, come monthly, some type of reporting to council, and then quarterly, we can hit the milestones, the targets, the barriers, those kinds of things that you might need from us. And then, um, the repealer. So, I don't really like the repealer in there right now, and I don't know if that's a legal thing that has to be there, but I don't want this resolution, if we haven't quite nailed everything down, to supersede 2019-14. I want to make sure that we are in line, so I just want to understand the repealer piece.
We, it is part of the form, but you have to be very careful when you have resolutions that you want to remain in effect. So, you could amend that repealer place to say, "Except for Resolution 2019-14," which shows the problem.
Okay, okay. So, that's all of my comments, but thank you for all that work.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions back for us on that?
Yeah. Yes, so, one of the member is supposed to be a Borough Council member. So, since we are reporting back monthly, do we still, do we still need to have one, one of you part of our task force, or the same conversation of the Planning Commission will apply to your role?
I think that's something that we can discuss. We don't need to make a decision on that tonight. We can discuss that and, and see what we all, what we all think works best.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, right.
And, um, um, one, so, since we, we just mentioned our connection with, um, all other leaders, uh, from other communities, and we are in direct connect, connection with other leaders, and also, uh, with, um, the Borough managers and other managers, so, um, our, my understanding is that it will take a while for, um, the managers' consortium to, uh, get organized around a common effort, around all of this. So, uh, by voting this task force, we hope we can get started in our community, reaching out and setting some goals within our community, reaching out to stakeholders. In the meantime, um, a bigger organization will form, um, to support us in the following months. And when we are set up and running, and they are ready to support us, at that point, we will be able to work on a, a request for a proposal, and, um, make that public, and look for an energy planner, uh, to help us. So, that might take a number of months, I'm not aware now how many.
Right.
But, um, we still feel that for the task force to get started in January or February is a, is very advantageous for us, so we can kind of create the team, um, set up our own goals, and whenever they are ready to coordinate, uh, a number of communities, we are also ready to jump on.
Yeah, I agree with that tactically.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions concerned?
I have a question, but it might be more for Mike. If, after reading this, and we make comments, and after you and administration have a time to review it, can we revisit some of these clauses? Because it's very vague right now, and I would be afraid to agree to phrases such as "agree to share the cost and benefits of this service." We don't know what this service is yet, and to agree to, to share cost, when we don't know what we're agreeing to, and whether or not we have other participating municipalities, is just something that I couldn't agree to.
I think that the sections that are specific to the request for proposals and the task force in Montgomery County, those specific items I have highlighted to just work through in terms of the language, because, like we said, we don't want to hold up the EAC's efforts, but we also need to make sure that our resolution doesn't conflict with whatever happens at the county level.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Eliza.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Sewer Authority presentation. Mr. Clark? Good evening. Okay.
Here's just here as backup, in case I can't answer any of the questions. I'm going to stand here, if that's all right. Good evening, everyone. Just in case people don't know me, I wanted to give you a little, this will be brief anyway this evening, but I wanted to give you a little background on myself. My name is Carol Smith. I live at 109 Maple Street. I'm in the first ward. Uh, I have lived in Contra Hocken since 1990, so I consider myself a resident, and I don't plan on leaving anytime soon, so it is my community, and I've been active in my community since I've moved here. Currently, I participate in the Shade Tree Committee, the Environmental Action Committee, I'm a founding member of the Community Garden, and for those of you who don't know about the Community Garden, I consider that one of the gems of our borough. Uh, that land was donated by the Sewer Authority, but we worked with the borough itself to initiate the garden, and now it's completely run as a social unit, and I do give a shout out to Nicole. Uh, she is wonderful in running the garden, but, um, anyway, that is also near and dear to my heart. My background is, professionally, I was trained as a chemist. I have a master's degree in chemistry, and I have worked for over 40 years as, in several fields, but primarily as a research investigator for the first two decades of my career. Then I moved into quality assurance and quality control, and different managerial-level positions in pharmaceutical companies. My last role was I was in quality assurance and managing external supply chains for an international company. So, that's my training, and that's one of the reasons I was interested in becoming part of the Sewer Authority. I have a background in chemistry. I am a scientist by training, and, uh, I do understand the biology of the RBCs, and the things that go into our odor control unit, uh, because that's my background. And currently, this is my first year as chairperson of the Sewer Authority, but I've been on the board for 10 years, and like my fellow board members, we are, um, unduly committed and enthusiastic about being a part of the Sewer Authority. I just want to say that I think we do an excellent job of managing the authority, and it is near and dear to our hearts. For whatever strange reason, the Sewer Authority is near and dear to our hearts. It's all about keeping the water clean. But, uh, the reason I am here tonight is, you had a council meeting on September 18th, and I was not here at that meeting, but I did review the video and a transcript of that meeting, and a few businessmen came to that meeting and spoke to you at council. And they presented a number of inaccuracies and untruths to you, and so, I am here to briefly provide you with some of the facts. You've gotten documentation of this. I know it's extensive documentation, uh, that's kind of how I work as a scientist, extensive documentation, but we gave you all, all the materials that you might need to, uh, look up any of these claims and corroborate them. We had a Mr. Morales claim that there are a wide variety of fees charged at our Sewer Authority. In fact, that's not true. We have set tapping fees for West Conch, and, West Contra Hocken and Contra Hocken, as do most other municipalities. They have set tapping fees, and actually, our fees are about in the middle of what our neighboring municipalities charge for tapping fees. It's also standard practice for authorities, as you yourself know as Borough Council, to require, uh, to require an escrow deposit for professional services, uh, that's so the residents don't have to foot the developer's bill. And again, that's well in line with is standard practice in most communities in our area. We had a Mr. Chuck Borkowski stated that developers never receive any money back, or if they do, it's less than $100. That's also untrue. We give our developers back the money that's owed to them as their development continues, and we give back a lot of escrow and professional fees that are not used. In reality as well, in 2019, we refunded both to Chuck and Ty Borkowski, around $1,500 to Chuck, and $2,800 to Ty. And again, that's in your documentation. We had an egregious claim by Mr. Borkowski that the 538 Spring Mill Avenue cost him out-of-pocket expenses from the authority of over $20,000. That kind of made my, my head pop off. Uh, his total cost with the authority was $8,434.55, which includes all the professional fees, and also included the one EDU tapping fee, which is $5,600. That I'm not going to talk about. Mr. Reality, uh, Mr. Morales claimed the authority was bidding on the East Norritin sewer system. That, again, also, we rolled our eyes at that, because that was the first time we heard that we were bidding on that sewer system. It has never come up at our meetings, and it has never even been discussed at our, our board meetings, or at any of our development meetings. And, and lastly, along some of the untrue claims, restaurant owners complained about receiving bills for additional tapping fees, and Janine discussed this earlier, but no bill has ever been sent out to any of these businesses. We are working on these adjustments, and we're trying to come up with an amicable solution, but we've been in discussions with these. Nobody has received a bill, so that is, uh, flatly untrue. At that same meeting, you heard from, I think, one businessman who recommended that you sell the system to Aqua. We've heard that before from many previous managers, and the developers, not the residents, the developers are interested in this because they don't have to pay tapping fees. That is true, if you- That is true if you're Aqua. If you're bought by the for-profit Aqua system, you do not have to pay tapping fees. Those tapping fees are mandated by municipal law. Those tapping fees go into your capital projects and maintaining your infrastructure. If you don't get those tapping fees as proposed under municipal law, and it goes to a profit entity, they still have to get that money from somewhere. Where does that money come from for your infrastructure maintenance and your capital projects? Comes from raising the fees to the majority of the residents. And I would just caution you to look at the neighboring residents that have sold their authorities to Aqua, and the increase in those fees to the residents in those communities. And many people in those communities are on fixed and low income. You know, the developers don't always live here, so, something to keep in mind. I did want to mention, too, that I said that our tapping fees are used for capital improvements and repairs. We've been, I think we've been incredibly forward-thinking in how we've been managing the Sewer Authority. You can read all over the country about infrastructure problems, about municipalities not maintaining their infrastructure. A good example is the fires in California. PSENG used to be a nonprofit municipality. It was sold and privatized, and if you've been looking at that, they really didn't pay attention to maintaining their lines, and they caused about four or five of those fires out there. We have been forward-thinking. We have an interceptor program. We've been lining a greater portion of our sewer mains, especially down by where all the development is, that whole section that's down by the river. What we've been doing is planning for the development of Contra Hocken by increasing the capacity and taking care of the system as it now exists. We have dedicated staff at the Sewer Authority. I know during that meeting, I guess that one developer mentioned, you know, Aqua's always there for you. Well, you know, you call our Sewer Authority in the middle of the night, Steven gets out in his truck, and he goes out, and he looks at what's going on. I called him the other day when there was sewage running down my alleyway, and I'm like, "Steven, what's up?" And Vinnie was there within ten minutes to find out what was going on, and then the fire truck came and the borough came. But, we are invested in this community, and we care about it, and we care about how it's run and how it's maintained. We've been a good neighbor to the community. We've been here since the 40s, that's true. I've been here for ten years, and in that ten-year time, we have done a pretty damn good job of overseeing that facility and righting some of the wrongs and actually taking it into the future. The odor control project, that was not mandated by DEP. That was not mandated by anyone. We could have ignored the neighboring communities, but, as you know, sewer plants were generally built along the industrial corridors in our nation, which is around the streams. Well, you know, God ain't making any more land, so these areas are becoming gentrified, and you have half a million-dollar homes a block away from the Sewer Authority. We didn't ignore that. We took it on, and we created a capital project on our own accord, and we did get state-of-the-art odor control. Our engineering staff oversaw that completely, and I have to say, I give Fred a lot of credit. We were in there for every point on that odor control project. And with our background, I have to say, our board does have a lot of expertise. Janine may not be a scientist, but, you know, she's very good at finance. She's a lawyer, so she helps us oversee all these decisions with her expertise. Kyle is also a lawyer, and helps us see over these things with those expertise. In my scientific training, we were actually looking at the material that was going in the odor control project, and we came up with a cheaper material. We had thought it was going to be, remember, the permanganate and the charcoal, and it's only charcoal, which is adequate for that. I also want you to know that we got over two-hundred thousand dollars in grants for that odor control project, and in the last few years, your Sewer Authority has gotten close to a million dollars in grants that Aqua would not have been able to get and would have had to come from somewhere. So, we diligently pursue any grants that we're able to get. So, we've gotten close to a million dollars in the last few years. Strategic planning for the future, as I said, I'm quite proud of the work we do and how we've tried to plan for the future development of Contra Hocken by maintaining the infrastructure as it is, and also looking forward. The authority would like to work with the borough even more than it does now. There are some things that are available to you that would be able to reduce your costs and also work with the Sewer Authority effectively. You have road paving that needs to be done. Well, we have sewer mains that need to be taken care of. You coordinate the paving of that, we'll pave the roads. You let us prepare that section when it needs to get done, and then we pave that. All it takes is coordination and planning. Additionally, many municipalities are doing that. They're combining their Sewer Authority with their stormwater management. Stormwater management in 2019 is becoming even more important than it was ten or twenty years ago, and as our community continues to grow, that is something that's going to have to be watched for. And so, there's a way you could combine services there and save money. The Sewer Authority doesn't only just treat your wastewater, it's an integral part of keeping our water infrastructure working. It's not just cleaning up the crap, it's actually helping provide a clean water source for our water treatment plants as well. In addition, I think we are, as I've said, a good member of the community. We've supported Fund Fest, the Community Garden. We had a booth at Fund Fest. We have an internship program, where we have a summer intern every year, and I just want to speak to that additionally. This year, we had an intern who was in her 60s, which I found Steven, I gave him kudos for doing that, because this woman in her 60s was actually going back to Delaware Community College and getting her degree in wastewater treatment, and she provided excellent service for, I mean, it was like having a PhD there, so it was quite interesting. But, anyway, I just wanted to summarize and correct the inaccuracies that were presented to you, and also, let you know that I think the sewer plant is a gem of a municipal asset, and you have a lot of people who are working hard to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Any questions?
Yes. Steve, do you have any more grants that you've applied for?
We did actually, we actually applied for a grant recently for PA Small Water and Sewer for Phase III of our interceptor project, which is along Washington Street going between Ash to the sewer plant itself.
Anyone else?
Well, I have some words that I'd like to.
Go ahead.
So, first off, thank you, Carol. I think that giving us some background on the community inputs and the efforts that the Sewer Authority has done for the community has been helpful. Yes, we've only heard one side from one group of customers, so it is always good to get a well-balanced perspective on things. I'm a little underwhelmed that it took you ninety-plus, or you sent ninety-plus pages the night before this meeting, where we couldn't even get through that to read it. Many of us have, if you could just let me, many of us have jobs, so I would have liked to have had that information to be able to ask questions of the authority, to actually make this a working type of meeting. So, this, to me, is just you speaking and us not being able to actually work through some of this to answer some of our questions. I guess one of my concerns is, you spent about five minutes, ten minutes, defending different parts of a presentation that was done in September, and we're now in December. Why did it take three months for those answers or those questions to come back to us? And we can go through that, but is it in response to the fact that we are looking at our assets and you're feeling uncomfortable by that? That's concerning to me, that it took three months to actually address our customers' issues and to actually give us real information from your perspective, so that we have a 365 view of it. Yes, the businesses did come forward. They expressed their concerns about fees, lack of transparency, and other related issues. I know I was asked personally to look into why the process goes back and forth between engineers, lawyers, and applicants multiple times, so, I think that we need to understand that a little bit as we, so that we are smarter when we're actually interacting with folks that are bringing complaints to us, and we don't have to go, "I don't know, let's ask them," and it just takes too long to answer. It takes up to three months. When I looked into how other municipalities do business, it appears that we impose a burdensome amount of administrative, legal, and engineering fees to the process, so I want to better understand that, why it appears that our fees and the back and forth happens, and that lays burden on our customers, our residents, our business owners, our contractors. Let's see. I did get a chance to read five pages of the document as I was driving home from work. I am perplexed at why you write about the easement, so Jane and I were involved heavily with the Borkowski project at Jones Street, and I'm perplexed at why you stated that the easement issue was back on as a borough's
Right.
reason for delay. And then, when we find out that you had a solution for a period of time, but never communicated that solution to Mr. Borkowski until we pressed from council, so I'd like to understand that a little bit better, and maybe the lawyers who got involved in it can help us understand that. But it appeared that that decision was made prior, but wasn't communicated to Mr. Borkowski until we actually pushed a little bit. So, for me, at a thousand-foot view, the information that I have to date, albeit one-sided, and now I have a little bit more, I have concerns that we're not meeting the customer service part from the authority. So, that's just kind of my overall one-thousand-foot view. There's a lot more work that has to be done. I think for us, we're evaluating our assets. We're going through all of our assets in the borough. The only way that we're going to be able to look at what our future is, just as you're looking strategically at your future, we have to look at what the assets of the borough are. In order to do that, we have a systematic approach, where we're going through the police department, all of our buildings, all of our assets of the borough. The Sewer Authority is one of those assets. We're not reacting to a group of people that came in and said, "Sell the Sewer Authority." We have a twenty-five, over twenty-five-million-dollar infrastructure that we have to figure out how to fund. We raise taxes, we sell the Sewer Authority, we borrow on existing assets. We've got to figure out what to do. In order to figure out what to do, we have to know what the value of everything is, so that we can think strategically for our future. Right? So, you have large dollar-figure plans, strategically so does the borough have to make hard decisions on strategic plans. So, the information that you've provided is great, but I think having someone come in and help us evaluate what the Sewer Authority is as an asset is very important, and that's all I have to add.
I would have to respond to that.
Thank you.
First of all, ninety days, that's fine. I did not yet win of what transpired in that meeting, what happened at that meeting. That's when I looked at the video, and that's when we got the transfer. So, that took some time. And then, we did want to respond, and we have tried to get some meetings, sit-down meetings, that haven't happened. I actually thought this meeting tonight was supposed to be a sit-down meeting. So, we did not mean to dump a ninety-six-page document, and just, as a scientist, just to let you know, that document is six pages, it has an adroit little points, six pages of the generalized response, and then all the attachments with documentation you need to corroborate those figures. So, it's kind of like the appendix with your documents. And, so that is why that happened like that. Wasn't our intention to do that on you?
So, I have a concern on that. I know you're saying that, but I'm pretty positive that the Sewer Authority was notified the day after the meeting about the complaints. So, you were aware of them. You chose this December date for the meeting. You had a choice, November or December, so it's not a surprise. So, I'm a little confused, and you're saying you thought it was a sit-down. You, it was...
That's what I had originally been told.
So, is there, are there issues?
Communication, communication.
Yeah, that's just trying to understand it.
As a board member, yes, our understanding, my understanding, and the board's understanding at every meeting, pretty much from September, when that your meeting occurred, through current, was that Steven, our solicitor, Carol, and myself, were to sit down with council privately and discuss...
And who gave you that impression? Where did you get that information, is what I would like to know.
Personally, that was me. Me and Stephanie had conversations as to whether or not we were going to sit down and work this out, you know, one-on-one, if not in a public meeting.
We were, but you were informed that council decided that it was not going to be private, it was going to be public.
Absolutely.
When were you aware?
Were you made aware of that?
When were you aware of that?
I was made aware of it yesterday.
So, we decided that a month and a half ago. So, when you're made, there's a lapse. I'm going to say, I don't think it's on our end.
No, there certainly was, and that's...
But, I think to be clear, it may not be on your end, but it's also not on our end. So, maybe our professionals have to do a better job, but that is not...
So, Janine, that's what I was asking earlier. I believe that there is some opportunity, that transparency within your own organization, from the board to administration, has opportunity for improvement, because somehow or another, our boards are getting caught in the middle of all of this, and that's not really what we want as a community. We want to be a community unit.
Exactly, which is why I think we are very...
But, this is leading to what feels like we're each trying to defend ourselves, and that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to be a team, right?
I just, we are trying, we have, we earnestly try to be a team and work well, and the fact that these...
And we understand that you're working well within yourselves. Sure, go ahead.
These developers, we told them, we told them to set fees. It's outrageous to me that they state those things at a council meeting that are out-and-out lies, because, as a counterfact, you don't have separate, we have one fee, and there's a council member that's at the Sewer Authority as well, so we have one fee, we have an escrow fee. I mean, that's common sense.
So, Carol, but they were complaining about not the fee. They know they have to pay a fee, but it was two times the amount that they were used to pay. That's what they're upset about. They understand they got to pay that fee.
Well, you know, this area is developing, and as an area develops, if you know anything about urban planning, when you have more compact people in the space, the numbers of people, hugely services do need to be increased, because...
I understand that, but they weren't, they weren't told that. They were just two times the amount. And also, the restaurant owners came in, and they were quoting numbers to us and saying, "This is what we're going to get charged for." So, if you didn't send the bill, where did them numbers come from? Because they were specific numbers they were giving us.
Yeah, but they didn't, we didn't send bills.
No.
She told you that.
You did not receive any bills.
The authority did send correspondence that outlined the...
So, an estimate you sent there?
An estimate, yes. And then, the authority offered the businesses an opportunity to install water-saving mechanisms to bring their water usage down, which would then reduce the number of EDUs. So, all that was, was a letter that outlined, "This is what your current usage is, and that's what that would equate to for the number of EDUs." It was not...
Okay, so you're working on that estimate.
So, there were no back charges?
No.
And there's not going to be back charges?
And you're trying to bring that number down to help these restaurant owners?
You're telling us that all the back charges that all the restaurants think that they're getting, they're not getting?
They've already been paying for the consumption, so if they're using water, they've already been being billed this. This is simply for the EDUs and the tapping fees, and there are no back charges, there's no interest, there's no penalties. And we would love to...
And there's no back charges for the EDUs?
Correct.
But, are you saying, will we charge them for the additional EDUs that are being used? Is that your question?
There's a baseline established in 2013.
Right.
So, if a business is using ten EDUs, since 2013, if you have now increased your usage to thirteen EDUs, there's a difference of three. We're not charging for the ten, it would just be the difference in three.
From what, from what time period?
From 2013 to now.
So, there is a back charge?
Well, the 2013, we're not, again, that was a baseline that was established, that those EDUs are not being charged. But if you can reduce your, your usage from the three additional EDUs down to two, the authority is only going to, is only looking for the two. But again, we continue to work with the businesses and the restaurant owners to try and come up with some sort of reasonable solution. Because obviously, the, the intent was never for the authority to hand anyone a bill for twenty-four thousand dollars. There is just, you know, the authority has offered payment plans, whatever, you know, the authority wants to work with the businesses, nobody's trying to hand
I'm not sure, I'm a little unclear on what they need payment plans for, if there's no back charges.
If they're using additional
I'm not understanding it. Right.
So the baseline capacity was established in 2013
Right.
for every non-residential account in the borough. And the assumption was that all of the capacity that was associated with each non-residential was purchased. And then since then, there has been an increase in usage, so the, you know, there's been, in addition, put on certain restaurants that have increased their capacity, and they're, they're doing more business, they're using more water. When a new business comes in, they actually sign, the agreement they sign with the authority states that if they do increase their usage, they purchase the additional capacity, because they're taking up additional capacity in the system.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's just, it's just the increase in usage from 2013.
So can I ask, if, if the authority was wanting to work with the businesses, why did it take the borough to, to host two meetings, to actually get things moving and talking? Why did the borough have to get you guys together if the authority was interested in? I, I, I'm just trying to understand the whole process.
To be honest, Tina, my, my comment to that would be because they weren't happy with the answer. I mean, there were people who came to us, they retained council, they wanted different solutions, and like I said, I mean, I'm, I'll, you know, go on record, like I said, my dad was a small business owner. I saw these numbers coming, and I'm like, "You send someone a twenty-four thousand dollar bill, I don't care how well your business is doing, that's a hit. You can't, you know, that's not something you can just, all right, I'm going to write this check this month." So as, as a board member, from my perspective, I said, you know, timeout, like, we have to be fair to these businesses. Yes, they are using more consumption. Yes, it's unfair for, you know, residential constituents to have rate increases based on a business who is doing better and using more capacity and taking more capacity away from other constituents, but we also have to figure out a way to work with those, those businesses. So we propose, and, and we're still open to, to a variety of different options. We've proposed different things. We've, you know, said, "Find ways to reduce it," and, and will use those, you know, prove to us that you're working on it. But essentially, the fact that we were not willing to say, "You don't have to pay for that consumption," was not something that people wanted to hear. And so even though those conversations were happening at our level, and, and honestly didn't really concern the borough at all, the fact that they weren't happy with those responses brought it to you.
So, so I would like to correct, it doesn't matter to the borough, because unfortunately, the, the people see the Borough of Conshohocken on your seal, and they believe that you are us. So that's how we end up getting in the middle of this. So again, it's got to be a team approach, and I have to tell you, listening to some of them, it did not appear that in the beginning, you were working that way with them. It took a little while, in, in my opinion, in my opinion.
You know, I absolutely hear you, and, and I appreciate your comment, but, I mean, we have records too, and I can tell you from day one, when that topic was brought up, I am on record saying, "Timeout." So, so I
And I think you guys do a good job, and you are professional, and, and that is true. But what I would say is, you've got to take this as a learning opportunity from the perspective of how we interact with our customers, right? So, so we didn't do something right, that we have a whole group of people that don't feel like the communication and transparency was there. It, it may, in your opinion, be there, and in their opinion, it's not. So that's two totally opposite, polar-opposite opinions. Somewhere in the middle, for everything, lies a truth, right?
Yes, but I, I would not say we didn't do something.
I, I would say we didn't meet their expectations, and if their expectations were they were paying nothing, then they were false expectations.
Correct, but that didn't mean that we were doing something incorrect.
It does not mean you're not doing, yes, I would agree with that. You, it does not mean you weren't doing something correct, but it does mean that we have an opportunity to learn from how we interact and communicate things, so that we don't put ourselves in those same types of situations. I think, in the end, communication is what it's all about, and I don't think
And expectation
We have a hard time sometimes with it. I think everyone has a hard time with communication, but setting expectations is part of the communication process.
Absolutely.
And then, and then actually verbally, and, and that's where policies and procedures help as well. So people can actually look at a piece of paper that says, "This is how this is done," and, and they can't argue it.
I'd like to speak to that. I have talked to some of these restaurant owners in person, at Community Garden, I have told them, "Come to our meetings, talk to us." So I don't agree with you there. We have talked to them, we've offered them to come to our meetings. Our meetings are open, all our meetings are on record. We have discussed this with them. Some of these developers that I mentioned, we have been going backwards, trying to help them and trying to make them understand what's going on. We didn't list all the developers like Soros and Wes that we've worked with, who've had no issues. So, I mean, should we bring those people in, that we shouldn't be able to work
I'm not saying you guys are bad people, I'm not saying that, that that group is right.
My point is, I've talked to these people, and I invited them to come to our meetings
And I appreciate that.
and talk to us. And they haven't. I said, "Come to our meetings, talk to us, come to our meetings." Not one of them did.
So I appreciate that feedback.
And we do appreciate that, we're just, our, our, I think our confusion on is, on that is why both sets, the restaurants and the developers, felt the need that they couldn't talk to you, and had to do it through the borough, which we don't really want to be involved in.
But Kloski's have been to a bunch of our meetings, so they have to our meetings. Other restaurant owners that I've talked to, I told them, "Come to our meetings, talk to us." I don't know what more I can do.
Oh, I know, we've got a room of empty people generally, I get it.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, like
So I appreciate knowing the other side of things.
Numerous times. I mean, I'm just tired of even saying it, because I've extended it to them numerous times.
Okay. Anyone else?
So how are we going to go forward here now? I mean, we talked tonight, you gave us how many pages to read?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five pages?
No, there's actually six pages that you need to read.
The first six.
And there's tendencies with the data.
So when can we revisit? Do we want to revisit this again, to make sure that? I'm concerned about that the, the restaurant owners and our developers, and listen, I'm like Tina, and I think the rest of council is, we listen to both sides. So we're hearing both sides now, we heard one side, we hear your side, but how are we going to go forward in making this work? You're supposed to be our partner, we elect, we elect your members, but people really, Carol, will you listen to me for a minute? People really, if you ask people, I've been on this board for eighteen years, and if you ask people, and our name is all over your equipment, and I always ask that question, why isn't it the authority, not the Conshohocken Authority? They think we own it. We, and, and one out of five people asked me just the other day, somebody running for office said to me, "Do we own the sewer authority?" People think we own the sewer authority.
Who's mandated by you?
That's right.
Asset of yours.
That's right.
So, I mean, in, in effect, you do own us, because you are mandated by you.
And that's a problem that you see in a lot of municipalities, because the names are so similar, and there's just not an understanding of the division. And, you know, as, as Carol said at the closing of her statement, what, what the authority would like to see is, is a much more collaborative process with the borough, you know, when it comes to street paving, stormwater, whatever the authority can do to, to help the borough, and I'm sure vice versa. We'd like to, the authority would really like to explore a much more collaborative process with the borough.
Now you're talking, I mean, that's, we never heard that before. As long as I've been on this board, I never heard the sewer authority's going to help us pave the road, and if we own it, you should share the profits with us.
Excellent point, Bob.
Well, now you've heard twice that. The, the authority wants to be more of a partner, more of a good neighbor, you know, and as Carol said, we, there's, there's pipes that the authority needs to go in and dig up the street anyways, so
That's the way, Carol's been in town for how many years?
I've been here since nineteen
And you're, you're loyal to the borough and all these, we, everybody should be working together.
I love Conshohocken.
Everybody should be working together in this town.
And the authority really has, over the last couple of years, really tried to increase its presence with Community Garden, with Fun Fest, and with really, you know, getting its name out. This year at Fun Fest, they were distributing magnets with the Eagles.
They did bring them, yeah.
The Eagles' schedule on it, so that people know, when you have a sewer problem, you call, you call Steve. They'll know, they're going to patch you on the steed. But you call Steve. And that's, that's really the edu, it's about educating, and that's something the authority has really committed to over the last few years.
It's a toilet, not a trash can, that's a mantra of ours.
Okay.
We had to make educational banter for people, and especially for the children, because, again, that all speaks to, if you don't use your toilet as a trash can, your expenses go down and you're wasting
Okay. Well, we appreciate your presentation and your time and your explanations, and does anyone else have any other questions?
No, but when I start reading through the ninety-six pages, although most of it's data, I'm a data wonk too. So when I start reading through stuff, I probably will have questions.
But please contact us, Tina.
And when you say, "Please contact us," who am I contacting?
Contact Stephen.
So, or Carol?
And, well, we all have email addresses now, we do have Conshohocken email addresses, so if you want to address the board, you can address, you can address it to me, and I will distribute it as necessary.
Because I'm sure, Janine, you're not going to be able to answer all the questions, and Carol, you're not, and Stephen, you're not, but in conjunction with all of you, we probably could get the answers.
Yeah, and the authority's happy to sit down in the meeting, the authority's happy to respond to email, if you want to coordinate it, however the council wants to. This is just that, again, this is the, the information that was put together was just a kind of responsive to what was brought up. If there's additional questions, the authority's happy to answer.
So the way, just so you know, the way we work is not little groups sitting in a meeting with other little groups. We're a council of seven that want to hear the information all at the same time, so that we all then can have discussions that, you know, we all hear things from our own perspective. And, and that's what makes us such a, I think, such a strong council, because we all come at it at different perspectives, and through our discussions of hearing the, the message, we all add value to what it is that, you know, our decision-making process is and how we look at things. So that's why we don't have little meetings.
I just know, all members of the board, we are very passionate about this, and we know how well-run the sewer authority is, and if you've been down there, it still looks like a, you know, a nineteen-fifties school, because we watch, really spend our money, and we've made a lot of changes that have saved money, and we are very passionate about what we do, as you care about.
And we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize, I think I jumped in, I don't think I introduced myself. I'm not sure if anybody doesn't know me, I'm Lauren Dale, I'm the solicitor for the authority, obviously, you know Steve Starke.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time, thank you very much.
Wish everybody the best of luck.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the next item is conducting interviews for zoning services. Mr. Italia?
Is it Mr. Pionys? There's Mr. How do you say his name? Italia? Italia. Oh, okay.
How you doing?
Good evening. You must be Mike.
I am Mike.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Just to preface the conversation for council, so we, our zoning officer of twenty-five years is retiring at the end of December. We are lucky enough to retain her in a part-time position for community development, and she'll be running the CDBG and Home Grant programs amongst the other things, the other duties as assigned. As a short-term solution to zoning services, we will be bringing in a consultant, and you have two entities that responded to an RFP, and they are here tonight to be interviewed by you specifically. Based off of the answers to those interviews, we will correspond over the next two weeks, and then you will vote on an entity to fill the role for 2020. And then the first entity in front of you this evening is Barry Isette and Associates with Mike Italia, the operations manager representing the team.
Thanks, Stephanie, appreciate it. So I'm Mike Italia, I'm the operations manager of the Bucks County Division. This is Rick Harmon, your operations manager.
Northeast.
Northeast corner, he's our floodplain specialist for tonight. And then we have Matt McCloskey, he is our main, mainline office operations manager. And then we have Erin Burke, she's our, she helps us with the business development in the southeast region. Brittany handed out some handouts there. Does everybody have the proposal in front of you already?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we are local, it's a little bit about me, I grew up in Limerick, so I am a Montgomery County kid, recently moved over to Bucks County when I got married there, so that's kind of head up that whole, that whole region, all the way down to New Jersey. Between myself and Matt, who's obviously local from the Plymouth Meeting area, and is born and bred here, we would be the two managers for your region, for all your services. Zoning-wise, I'm a certified zoning officer with, through PSATs. They're the entity that basically manages that endorsement and that certification. I manage eleven municipalities under my scope, I'm not physically in them, that's a lot to be spread around. But from a zoning perspective, I manage Yardley Borough, Newtown Borough, New Britton Borough, and then we do code in some of those as well. So I have inspectors spread out through that area, but that's kind of my reach there. Also have a pretty significant background in land development, I'm the chairman of the Warwick Township Bucks County Planning Commission, so I see a lot of land development. It's a, it's kind of smudged in between Doylestown and Wortminster. It's a, it's a growing gateway community in Bucks there, so we get a lot, not a ton of commercial, but it's a significant size of residential. Plus I manage all the saldo in zoning services in Newtown Borough, so all the land development applications come through my desk. We don't have a borough manager there, so I have to handle all that stuff as well. Zoning hearing board meetings, some municipalities like me to go to them, some don't, so it's basically at the pleasure of the council, whether or not they want my representation at those meetings. So whatever you see fit, if you need me, if it's a contro, controversial topic, which does happen from time to time, I'm pretty skilled at handling and managing those issues as well. I'll let Rick talk about the floodplain management side of the world.
Thank you for having us. My name's Rick Harmon, I am a certified floodplain manager, I'm also a master code professional. My main area is northeast PA. I did do a lot of work in Phoenixville area when I first started with the company, we were just talking about how much I was traveling, and thank God these guys are here. As far as floodplain management, I deal directly with FEMA. I started out dealing with Nicole Lick, who's actually the Region Three Director right now for FEMA. The floodplain, or PEMA, the director is Mr. Tom Hughes, I deal directly with him. I've set up floodplain ordinances in Town of Bloomsburg is the main one, they just reached Level Seven on the CRS program. There's only seven in the state that hit that. We had to mitigate one hundred and fifty properties, took two years to do it, countless meetings, redoing the floodplain ordinance, it was a lot of work. I mean, if you know about floodplain, floodplain can be a lot of work. We also did the, I don't know if you're, the famous town of Shikshini. I actually got them off ten years probation, and got them into a CRS program, and now they're in clean standing with FEMA and PEMA. So Plymouth Township, pretty much everything around the Sesquahanna River. Sesquahanna River. So when it comes to floodplain, I've actually been part of people that develop the ordinances. We enforce ordinances. We look at the common sense of the ordinance when it comes to construction because a lot of it contradicts itself. So there are some things you actually have to look at and know what you're talking about when you're dealing with floodplain. We have an initiative right now in Bloomsburg where we're holding, one of the big issues is holding, some homeowners don't understand floodplain and it's a shame to punish them or other property owners when they just don't understand it when the contractors should. So we're doing an initiative right now with PEMA and FEMA that we're kind of combining them. So it's not just stuck on the homeowner anymore. The contractor knows they need to come in and get permits for floodplain. They know they need to get permits for floodplain. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have for anything. I did look over your floodplain ordinance. It seems very in-depth. I mean, you have the Conservation Floodplain District, which a lot of people don't have. That's actually nice. I did also see you have a repetitive loss, which a lot of municipalities got rid of because I know that's a tracking nightmare and I'd be interested to find out how Contra Hawk can tracks that because that's, that's pretty tough to track sometimes. But again, that's all I have and I'm here for any questions if you have any.
I do have one quick question. How do you find the basins working as far as for flood prevention?
How do I find what? I'm sorry.
The basins, the water basins, how do you think they're working? I noticed there's a lot of them out there now. Does that help with the flooding?
Are you just talking general?
Stormwater basins?
Yes.
Oh, oh. Yeah, that's, that's, that kind of ties in with your MS four and your stormwater management. That all kind of ties into flooding. It can help, but just putting one basin in one section and saying we're going to feed something else doesn't tell you anything. It's, it's a broad range and that's why it's tied into MS four. So when these projects come in, they're decent sized, they go to planning. That's, that's when you find all that, when it goes to planning and you can see where they're going to retain that water.
It was, you can have them locally, but unfortunately you're inheriting a lot of development and runoff from around you. So it's, you can do your part, but get to spread the wealth to that direction, you know?
Thank you.
Thanks.
So as Mike said, my name is Matt McCloskey. Born and bred around here. Was in White Marsh Township for thirteen years and codes zoning, helping out there. I am now an operations manager, newly appointed for the new mainline region for our company. I am primarily in Radnor Township, actually every day from seven-thirty to four-thirty right now. And we're getting additional staffing down there. It's first of the year. Drive-through here every day. So if there's anything that, that Mike can't get to right away, I'm literally two and a half miles away from this building. So I'll be here right away and can help you guys out.
Thank you. I'm Erin Burke. I'm the marketing manager for our southeast region. Just to highlight what Barry Isette and Associates offers, we are a multi-discipline engineering firm. So should you do have questions, our staff of professionals handles everything from the dirt to the rooftop, rooftop, concept to ribbon cutting. So not only do we have talented code and zoning and floodplain management professionals, but we also have diverse staff of engineering professionals on hand that can help lend additional information or support.
So that's a little bit about us. Tell us about you. What are you looking for? What can we help you out with?
Help.
And with two feet.
Right. Well, I guess I have a question concerning the loss of our valued member. We've had a dedicated zoning officer for twenty-five years. This will be a big change for us. So Mike, how will you handle eleven other municipalities on top of Contra Hawk?
Right. So I, they're under my scope, my umbrella.
So who would be the face that would represent?
I would be your face for most of it.
So you would represent us?
Matt and I work in a team concept. So a lot of our services in the other municipalities are what we call you get what you pay for, you get what you want. Because they don't want us in the office. They don't want that overhead. So we're very mobile people, right? This thing is permanently attached. Just ask my wife. So, you know, that's what happens in those towns. Only one of the other towns requires us to come in a couple hours during the week. They're not as fast. They're not as busy. A town like this where the demand is there, you know, we will have a presence here, whether it's myself, whether it's Matt, you know, so they're answering questions. And in the, you know, right out of the beginning, we're side by side with her, try to figure out what's going on, where things are at, where is it going, where are the pitfalls? That's the biggest thing. Who are our problem children, where the pitfalls are, and so we don't get stuck in the mud, right? That's the biggest thing is finding out how things, by no means am I the person that just likes to come in and throw the apple cart over, right? I'm not like, here, you're going to do it my way and this is how we're going to do it. Like if, if the wheels are moving, there's no reason to reinvent the wheel. So, you know, that team effort and then kind of moving it forward from there.
So our borough is really morphing towards customer focus, for lack of a better word. So what is your policy in regards to response time to questions or inquiries, concerns from developers, residents?
So when I'm not in the office, my phone rings all day long. Most of the, my desk phones and other municipalities auto-forward to my cellphone. So that, so there, the public's getting that constant contact, as are the elected officials, the police, the fire department, the office staff. You know, I'm always available, whether it's a simple text or hey, you know, I have a question with this, question with that, and I assume your ordinances are online as most are, which makes life a whole lot easier with an app. You know, if a resident comes in, hey, I want to put up a fence, how many, you know, how many feet can it be? Yeah, sure. Okay. Let me go into their ordinances real quick and look. So they're getting that on-demand service, but they don't know I'm not sitting, you know, in a, at a desk here.
So being in this business and customer focused, you always have unhappy customers who don't agree with policies and procedures that you're, you're giving to them. Tell me a little bit about how you handle the customer first, but then the communication back to the borough from the perspective of if you're not in-house, you're representing us. So how are we getting that information that there was an unhappy customer?
Right. So the goal is not to have the unhappy customers here, right? Because this is not where we like to deal with unhappy customers. We'll go in the wayback machine. You know, twenty-five years ago, I worked for Gennardi Supermarkets. Gennardi Supermarkets lived and died on the customers always first, right? And, and I've taken that from when I was sixteen, bagging groceries, making sure I didn't stick the eggs in the bottom to today, right? And, and it, when it comes to enforcement, that's when it seems to be unhappy customers. And I believe through enforcement, through education, by saying, hey, listen, maybe you just didn't understand or going out to have a site visit, like going to their house. I'm not the type of guy that fires off an email or sends a letter and hides behind that. Like I believe in going out and trying to rectify the situation. So we don't have the unhappy customer here or so the borough manager's not getting a phone call saying he did this, he did that, you know? But we also need to be very aware that we're not getting in the middle of a civil dispute. You know, neighbor A doesn't like neighbor B, right? And that's where the background information, hey, where are our problem children lie? Because we all know how that, ooh, the new guy's in town. Let me see if I can get some leverage, right? And we want to avoid that at all costs. They're everywhere. They're, it's just, it's just the nature of the beast, unfortunately. But we manage the best we can. If we have a, a problem person where it's getting escalated and they're, I'm coming to counsel. By no means am I going to just sit here on my hands and not tell you and surprise you that someone's going to come here and start screaming at you. Obviously, the borough manager and whoever, if there's a liaison, council. And that's the other thing. Like, I don't know, do you do liaison, like a zoning liaison to council by chance?
Not for zoning.
Right. Okay. So some of the other towns do. So I will take that council person with me and kind of try to quiet it down a little bit. The mayor and some of my other towns are really good at that and they, they're good at icing the cake up a little bit to cool things down.
So you're the new guy?
Yep.
And we've had things the way they were forever. And now we're not going to call them the problem children. We're going to call them the folks that want to challenge. We've got a new set of eyes in town. How, how will you go about interacting, enforcing, communicating?
Sure. So do some research. I'm assuming you have property files. Dig into their property files, get some background information, have a meeting with them here, wherever they're comfortable meeting, talk to them, say, hey, all right, what's going on? Talk a little about the history. You know, I believe in killing them with kindness, but I'm also very aware that we've always done it this way, you know, slogan that's out there. And, you know, I may do things differently than she does, but that doesn't make her a bad person, me a bad person. It's just the way zoning is, right? It's how we kind of lay things down. And you just, you got to be out there in front of it. You gotta, you gotta make them feel that you're listening and not, uh-huh, uh-huh, uh-huh. Because that, they don't want to hear that, right? Because that, that just aggravates the situation and by no means blow them off, even if they are the problem people. Because like, there's, there's folks in other towns that they'll call me every day, this is going on. Okay, great. And you know what? I gave them attention and, you know, they feel like a million bucks. Hey, listen, he's actually listening to me. I'm sure that wears off at times, but you know, you know, you got to give them the attention regardless. You have to treat everybody the same. Because if you don't and other people get wind of it, they're going to be like, oh, well, you know, you handled, you know, Mrs. Jones, but you told this other lady that, and that's not going to work. And, you know, you kind of need to, you got to get out in front of things. You have to set the narrative. If you let the complainant set the narrative, you're already behind the eight ball.
So you guys carry, cover a lot of ground here.
Yeah.
By looking at this. So it's just you four?
Oh, no.
No, no, no.
I was just going to say.
The Co Services Department is thirty-four professionals.
Okay.
We are established one hundred and seventy-five, straight out across the corporate offices.
Thank you.
We're in the process of changing some of our ordinances. And have you ever participated in an in-house zoning ordinance revision?
Several times.
Okay. So much fun.
It's surprised.
Right, Mike?
Isn't it? We, yes.
So are there any responsibilities listed in the RFP that your firm would not be able to satisfy?
No. If there is, if there's something came up, we would obviously tell you. We wouldn't just say, oh, sure, we could take care of that.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
Now, just your submission talks a lot about the code services department. Given the RFP specifically about zoning services within the borough and organization, can you speak to your understanding of the borough's current organizational structure?
Matt, you want to speak for that?
In regards to, so in direct regards to our RFP being code-heavy in language, our code professionals provide the zoning aspect of the world. We, like Mike said, he has quite a few municipalities. Rick has it his way. So we are, we cross-train with zoning and code enforcement. Not saying that we're here to do Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code Enforcement, but we're, we're here to do the zoning.
But you won't turn us down?
We support it.
Yeah.
You won't turn us down if we ask you?
Oh, no.
Oh, no. Most definitely not. In our RFP and in the handout tonight, page three just lists the amount of things that we do. And we're not going to turn it down. We're going to help you out as much as we can. Now.
I guess I'm just going to jump in for a second. We have worked strategically over the last couple of years to set up a team and an organizational structure that we are very proud of and that we are very sound in. As a borough manager, I am not looking for an entity to come in and upset what has so taken time and strategy to set up. So I think from my perspective, what I'm looking for is a firm that's going to come in and is going to provide zoning in place of an individual who is an institution in our community. That is, that is, that is really what we're looking for. So I think my concern with the RFP submitted with the language as the way it was is that for someone who's not in the field and understanding the, the concept of the cross, there could be a perception there that there's, that you're, you're heavy on the code side and perhaps not on the zoning side. And I think what would be helpful for council to hear is, is kind of explaining if that is in fact the case or if it's not the case, what, what is the expertise in the zoning that you're going to be providing to the borough?
So the department is actually called Code Services and that's ultimately why it's referenced as Code Services in the RFP response. But I know you can go across all the different certifications held by everyone in your department and how diverse the expertise is.
Yeah, absolutely. So by no means are we here to dislodge, you know, the way that things work. We're here to support that. We, we work in other municipalities where we're not the code official and it's another third party and we sit at the same table, we have lunch together. Hey, you know, what about this? What about that? Oh, yeah. You know, you want to watch out for that? Or, yep, or you missed that? Let's do this. And we support that effort. Like that, we're not here to just get business. Like that's not the way we've built this company. We've built this company to provide solid services to make sure the residents are happy and you guys don't get ripped off, right? I'm not here to just rack billable hours up, okay? We're here to make sure things get done, get done well, everybody's happy. These guys are happy over here and most importantly, they're happy back there. Because we're the one, they're the ones going to be screaming the most if things are not going well, right? And, you know, to answer to your response, if there was a need or somebody asked for something, sure, we would absolutely support it. And that's why that's laid out like that. From a zoning perspective, it's A to Z, soup to nuts. You get everything, whatever you want, you got it, right? So that's from the zoning perspective. If there's something I don't understand or don't know, I'll go find somebody that does, whether they're within our company or I have to reach out to other contacts where I say, listen, here, this is the problem I'm having. I get calls from the city of Philadelphia all the time. Hey, we're having a problem down here. Can you come look at it? Sure. Am I billing them for that? No. That's called being a good guy. And that's how I was raised and that's how I run this company in my area. You know, you pay it forward. It pays dividends in return. And that's, that's kind of how things go.
And why would you want to work for us?
Why?
Yeah, why?
Because Matt told you how great we are, right?
Hey, listen, I spend a lot of time down the street there.
On the bridge?
Pictures and wings. So, no. Growing up, I've watched this town evolve from, you know, having Lee Tire on the, you know, east end there to Hale, you know, being a fireman, coming down to visit, you know, where they make the jewels of life at that time and responded to many of the fire calls in town. But I'm also seeing it evolve right in front of us, as are other towns. And we want to support that. So that's the other thing you get from me. I'm not just a zoning officer. I also do business development. So in towns like New Britton, I'm not the zoning officer trying to stop a project. I'm the zoning officer trying to find a way to get it done, right? And I want to see your businesses full. I want to see the people walking on the street. I want to bring my kids here to go have ice cream or get roast pork up the street or whatever, right? I want to see the town full. And that's how we, that's the narrative I have in every other town that I work in. The businesses are full. We're finding ways to get people through the zoning. It's not just saying, here's my application. Nope, it's not okay. Go find a way. You tell me a way. No, how about let's sit down together, work out and see how we can make this, get, get this project done, get it off the ground, right? Because a stagnant town is a town that will, it dies basically. And we don't want that, okay? We want to see the development. As long as you want to see the development, I'll, we'll make it happen, right? So we want to support that and be part of that. Because Contra Hawk, it really is just, it's growing right in front of our eyes and it's really impressive of what you guys have done so far.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Any questions? Okay, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
No. But Rick knows.
Did we price out the statue of Chris Stettler yet?
When's he unveiling?
So what do you think?
We're chiseling it in Brons.
Getting rid of the Indian?
Hello, how are you?
You just don't do a lot of talking, all right?
Hello.
How are you doing?
I'm joking.
It's a workshop, we're working.
This is what we can pay for.
The next entity in front of you is Panonian Associates. Um, I will give you an opportunity to introduce yourselves. And then if you want to just give a brief summary of the RFP, they have the RFP in front of them and they've had it for some time, so it's been reviewed. And then they'll take time for any questions that they may have of you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Cal Hassan. I am an officer with Panoni Associates. I had been with the company for over twenty years. I also run the King of Prussia office, which is only three miles away from here. And I have a staff of about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty people. Uh, we are local, we're next to the borough and, uh, uh, we, uh, we look forward to, to serve in the borough. I will have Eric introduce himself and then, uh, I'll give it to, uh, to Beth. And then I'll just briefly about the company. And then Eric, since he's gonna be in charge with the, uh, with the services, I'll just give him the floor to answer any questions he has.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Eric Johnson. I've been with Panoni for the last eight years, uh, working with, uh, many of the local municipalities, you know, providing them engineering and zoning type services. Uh, me personally, I grew up down the road in Blue Bell. Uh, went to Kennedy County High School, uh, when it was, before they closed it. I have a lot of, uh, direct connections to Borough. Actually, my cousin is a police officer for the Borough. Uh, my, both my family, my wife's family are longtime residents of Borough, uh, business owners. So I've spent a lot of time, uh, in the area. Bought every pair of shoes, uh, of my life for school and flacos and the tuxes for my wedding. So, you know, I know the area pretty well. So, uh, you know, I, I, we can go more in depth with, uh, some professional experience, but I'll pass on to Beth to introduce herself.
Hi, my name is Beth Ann Grasso. Beth, please. I have about twenty-three years with, uh, in engineering, specializing in hydraulics and hydrology floodplain management. I've been with Panoni for about twenty years. I was formerly in the, I'm in between the Philadelphia office, uh, and the Haddon Heights office. I also serve the King of Prussia office, uh, wherever the needs are required. Specializing in floodplain management is a smaller niche, so, you know, I do support multiple offices. I also, uh, do a lot of training of other personnel to teach them how to do floodplain management. I'm a certified floodplain manager. There's about fifteen of us now, I think, at the company. Very important. We're advocating people getting their floodplain management certification. It's a big help, typically when you're, well, typically when you're in engineering, you don't always get the opportunity to look at the administrative side. Just like if you're on the administrative side, sometimes you don't get involved with the engineering. And going through the Certified Floodplain Management Program has helped, uh, join that together so that we understand both sides, municipalities, land developers, and also the engineering side. I have three grandsons, I'll be happy to tell you all about those. Seven, five, and four years old in a few weeks. That's about all that.
All right, so just briefly to tell you about Panoni, you probably are already aware of Panoni. We provide to the borough right now with, uh, traffic services through Brian Keating. Uh, but Panoni is a full-service firm. Again, we're located not even three miles away from you. We are a one-stop shop firm. We provide just about every single, uh, engineering service that is required from a, a project from start to finish. Uh, we do have, uh, a, a full staff ready and available to provide the services that are required under the RFA. Again, uh, Eric is gonna be the person who's gonna be running with the, with this, uh, with these services and he'll have a complement of a complete staff, uh, ready and available to him. I'm gonna pass it over to him and, uh, we'll answer any questions you have about the RFP, about Panoni, about our services.
So Eric, do you serve as a zoning officer for any other municipalities?
So I don't serve explicitly as a zoning officer. I work, um, with multiple municipalities. Currently, I'm the Borough Engineer in Swalthmore Borough and Narborough Borough. And along with several municipalities, both in Montgomery County and Delaware County, Springfield, Marple, um, Lower Marion. And we work, uh, as part of that, we work either right along with the zoning officer or we do a full complement of zoning review, uh, and zoning compliance. You know, so, uh, to give you an example, we have in, um, Narborough Borough, they have, uh, an independent zoning officer. However, they have us do a full zoning review, um, you know, uh, and they also are working through, they recently, um, had implemented a new form-based zoning code a few years ago. And they've now let a few land development products come through that we have reviewed and worked on. And they've now found the hiccups that have occurred, uh, in that. So we've been working with their planning commission, uh, and with the Borough staff to try and work out and make updates, modifications to their zoning code. But I, you know, I have experience doing, uh, everything from, um, a small residential property pool in the backyard, doing a full review for that, and all the way up to two-hundred-plus acre, uh, land developments, including the zoning compliance for that. And that's not only just the review on the front end, it also goes through to, through construction and then closing of the project on the back end.
So you would be representing the borough then at hearings?
Correct, yes. Yes, I go, uh, it, um, I attend, uh, the planning commissions and Borough Council meetings on a regular basis, yes.
How could you work in coordination with the solicitor for the zoning board as a third party?
Uh, well, we do this, uh, you know, very often, all of our applications, we, we as the, you know, the zoning professional know, are responsible for knowing the code, uh, and applying the code, um, you know, and preparing the technical side of the, um, zoning review and the application. I work with the solicitor as we're approaching the, um, the, you know, zoning hearing on a particular matter and really make sure we have everything in line, if all the exhibits and everything, uh, is prepared. And that everything is properly documented with the solicitor after the hearing.
So you would be the face of the borough in essence, representing the borough. If you and the solicitor had differences of opinions, you're both third party, who has the best interests of the borough?
Well, I would hope they both have the best interest of the borough. I mean, ultimately, it, I think we're both perhaps looking at it from different angles. You know, the zoning officer, you know, really trying to look at what's the, what's the code say? What's the most, best application of that code? You know, I guess ultimately, if you're, you're coming down to a question of the two third parties, you know, my, your first goal would then be probably work, try to work with the Borough staff and make sure, see if there's any, uh, any other angle that someone could be taking a look at this from.
So how would you plan on filling the shoes of our twenty-five-year veteran?
Well, first of all, that twenty-five years, uh, you know, coming into, uh, and working in the position, that's a great person to want to get to know and talk to for a little bit. Because obviously, they know the ins and outs, um, you know. I'd say the best way to do that is really the, the way we present, uh, our services to the borough. We're a company that's been around, uh, in the area, representing municipalities for fifty years. We have a full host of, you know, it's, it's not just me and not me alone. We have a whole, whole host of, uh, experience, um, and, you know, abilities that we can bring. Uh, so if I don't know the immediate answer, I have a whole bunch of people, uh, right down the road, uh, even at our other offices that could fill in that information.
How do you see yourselves working with our, our administrative staff?
So we, and it's the same way I like to work in all the other municipalities where we work. We like to, you know, we work side by side with the staff. So, uh, you know, as an example, uh, tomorrow, I'm gonna be out at some of our other clients. They walk in, I sit down, I have a desk right next to the zoning officer in one of our townships. We sit down, I have a pile of projects, uh, that I need to discuss with him. And then we work out, you know, uh, we work right into the system they have. So everyone, everyone's a little different, everyone has a system that's working for them. You know, we might be able to bring a fresh look or a different idea to propose to how we could do something. But, you know, it, use the, the staff as a tool. They have been around, they know what's going on in the borough. And then we can just be a complement of working with them.
So you said you do Narborough Borough and where else?
Correct.
What, what other? Did you say two?
So I, I'm the, uh, the Borough Engineer in Narborough Borough and in Swalthmore Borough.
Okay, Swalthmore.
Um, I also do, I spend a lot of time in Springfield Township, Delaware County, Marple Township. Uh, I do some work with Lower Marion. And that, that's my main focus. I get involved with some other clients, but that's the main groups I've been working with for now.
Anyone else?
Just this question, I think it's for Beth. What do you see the borough's biggest challenges are in the near future related to FEMA and the floodplain regulations?
On a daily, it seems like a daily basis, uh, FEMA regulations are getting tighter and tighter. And they, I know they dictate down to the townships, uh, through the DEP. Get, get the regulation, they're getting better at getting the regulations filtered down so that we all get a better product. But some of the biggest problems are, um, the, the land here is so incredibly valuable that, um, people, or development is occurring in places that are left open now. And they're usually the places that are left, have been left open historically because they're the most vulnerable places, such as floodplanes. So it's, it's important to protect the, the people that live here, the people who want to move here, want to do business here, kind of from themselves sometimes, and, and kind of guide them into, um, you know, what's, what's the best way to do the development safely and not impact your neighbors upstream, downstream, or yourself? So.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in.
Thanks.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Steph, you have any more questions? Nice to meet you too. Next item on the agenda is consider nine oh six Fayette Street zoning hearing board application.
And now a word from your institution. You may.
Oh, stop it, you love it.
Oh, yes, I do. This is the third time this has happened like this. Can't have it anymore. Nine oh six Fayette Street, you all may be aware of it. It's up on, in the residential office zoning district. And it is a very large property. It has thirteen thousand twenty square feet. There are three structures on it currently. A main building that was a house, it was formerly a doctor's office. A doctor lived there, the way it used to be, it's not that way anymore. After the doctor passed away and his wife sold the property to Mr. Grogan, the property was converted and received conditional use approval for a professional office in the building and one apartment. There is also a garage that's used for vehicles, for a vehicle and for storage. But there's an old garage there too, that faces Forest Street, as George is so nicely pointing out. And in that is a, an apartment. I think when that was converted, the, the condition on that was that the ground floor be used for housing one vehicle, since parking on Fayette Street is getting, or in Forest Street is probably just as bad as Fayette Street anymore. So there have been approvals done for this project. The conditional use approval for the, um, for the main building. There was a zoning variance for, uh, in two thousand sixteen for the construction of a garage that exceeded three hundred and fifty square feet, it's four hundred and eighty-three square feet. The owner of the property, Mr. Grogan, now wishes to improve the property by expanding the residential units on it. Footprints of the building will not change. The number of units will not change. So the parking requirements will not be impacted on this. The main building, there is a small addition being proposed of about a hundred and ninety-three square feet. And it represents about a six percent increase in, um, expansion of the non-conforming use in that building. And it would simply add a living room, a better, better flow in the building. And, and George and Jeff can explain that to you. The other, um, modification is a little different. It is to the Forest Street apartment. And the proposal is to add a third floor, because it's a very small apartment now. But that would represent, it, it's a very small building. The square footage of the structure is one thousand four hundred and eighteen square feet. And adding, adding the third floor would be a forty-six percent increase in the non-conforming use, which is well above the twenty-five, that's twenty-five permit, twenty-five percent expansion permitted in the zoning ordinance. However, if you take the overall expansion of all the structures on the property, you're, you're well below twenty-five. So this is, the board is gonna have to, the zoning board is going to, um, probably determine that you have to take each building separately. But if they, they need to determine whether they're gonna take them together or separately. And so there will either be a special exception needed for the, um, expansion, or there will be a, a special exemption needed for one expansion of the main, and the main building, and a variance for the expansion in the, um, in the Forest Street apartment. Mr. Rosarowski's here, Mr. Grogan is here. George and Jeff can explain the rest of the project to you.
Thank you, Chris. By the way, am I gonna be your last case?
Oh. Yes.
Oh, wow. I'm honored.
There are two hearings on the sixteen. After that, that's up to Stettler.
I like to go second then. Uh, thank you for seeing us tonight. Chris did a really good job, uh, explaining what we're doing here tonight. As she pointed out, this is the Hameen House. So we're doing an expansion onto this area that I'll show you in a second. And it's only a hundred and ninety-six square feet. And it's just gonna be basically for an expansion of a living room to make the apartment more usable, friendly. So going over that part first, um, right now they have two bedrooms. You have an existing bathroom. The thought is to put another bathroom next to it, uh, because right now that one bathroom serves four bedrooms. With that, you have a kitchen and a dining room. And it's, the proposal is to add a hundred and ninety-three feet to this area of the building, which would just, again, kind of give them a living room, because really, they, right now, that doesn't really have a living room the way it was designed. The building was, as Chris said, it's part of this, kind of the old Victorian part. And this part was added on sometime after it was built, after the Victorian part was built. So if you look at it from the perspective of what will it look like, it's basically gonna be this little square that's gonna be added onto the building. So it's gonna be rather nondescript. And, um, you know, he's gonna use hardy board plank as a siding, make it look, make it fit with the arch. As an architect, uh, he's obviously gonna be very concerned about the look of things and the look of his building that he owns. So he's gonna do a good job making it, uh, fit in. The second part, um, which is, we go back again to the main plan, which is this garage in the back along Forest Street that's been there. The ideal to that one would be put a third floor on it. The third floor elevations are as follows. This would be from the front. This would be from the left, which I guess would be towards the northern end?
Towards downtown Conchak.
Okay, the left elevation's that way. Uh, this would be the right elevation and this will be, uh, the rear elevation, excuse me. And then this is the right elevation of what he is proposing.
So that's a Forest Street address then? So that's a Forest Street address then?
Is the actual mailing address Forest Street?
Yes, two oh seven Forest.
That one?
So, how many apartments?
This elevation, that elevation is one that faces Forest.
Right.
This is what you receive from Forest.
But that's not the front of the house?
So, that's going to be, how many apartments?
There's only one apartment.
One apartment, and the garage is standing there, right?
Eh, correct. And I'll show you a floor plan so you'll get a better, I think I have a floor plan.
And what's the height?
So the heights are, and, I'm going to bring Jeff over here so we make sure he's getting correctly here. So this is the, this is the proposed front elevation. This would be towards Fayette Street. Right now, existing is down here. That's right. Existing, it's twenty-two feet eight inches to the top. The addition, this is twenty-two eight inches to here. So Jeff, what would be about another eight feet, I think it was, or eight, nine feet?
Uh, about eight, yeah, let's say nine feet.
So it's within the height requirement?
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
So it's thirty-one.
It's under thirty, yeah.
Right, thirty-five.
We're not taking a variance for height.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be sure.
Sure, no, I understand. So this is the existing left elevation. Again, it's twenty-four feet, because the grade is going down as you base your calculations. Thirty-five feet is up here. This is the proposed, I get that didn't fit in, can't really fit it in. But thirty-five feet would be up here. So it's several feet below the, the permitted height. And the floor plan kind of lets you know what is, what, why we need this. There's a utility area down here and a garage on the first floor. And then the second floor really just has a living room, excuse me, a kitchen, a small bedroom, a small living room and another bedroom.
And a teeny bath.
And, and a teeny bath. So the area on top would be a third floor of six hundred and forty-seven feet. And Jeff, what would be on the inside of that?
Um, there'd be a much larger, nicer bedroom and a much larger and nicer master bathroom. And closet space.
So again, the number of units won't change. It'll say the one apartment. It's just making it nicer for the residents and making it look nice.
If you go to the first rendering, you showed us where the parking is.
Oh, yes, hold on a second.
You have eight spaces written in there, but you're only showing three.
Yeah, well, they received a variance a number of years ago for that, for the, for the actual parking, which is one of the cases Chris mentioned before.
Yeah, one, two, three, but you're, you're stating.
Well, there's, there's parking here.
I, I know it a lot.
Yeah, and there's parking there. There's parking inside for the garage, and then there's parking here. So again, there's no, there's going to be none more people there. It's just going to be, you know, larger areas. But previously, and I can't remember the year off the top of my head, you had a variance for the number of parking spots that were required.
Yes. I think there was, I can't remember how many were required, but we got the variance to do, what is it, so it's like eight?
Eight.
Eight spaces. So initially there were, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Initially, we got the approval to, I think, do seven parking spaces on the lot. And then, excuse me, when I did the additional garage, that actually gives two more parking spaces.
So the gar, if they use the garage, we.
I didn't hear you.
I mean, it's just, if, if they use the garage.
There is one unit in the existing garage, and there's two, one parking space in the existing garage apartment.
But Jeff, you're going to, the garage is yours. You put your cars in there, correct?
Okay, I can't hear you very well.
The garage that you built, the new garage?
Yes.
You put your cars in there, correct?
Correct.
You're not going to let the tenants use that, right?
If they want to use that, I can get those cars out of there.
Yeah, but it has to be, it has to be used for cars, not stores.
Oh, yeah, it's got to be used for cars.
That's fine. I'm, I'm just, you know.
I think if you, this is, I think, the count, one, two, three, uh, four, five, six. He counted one, seven, then eight, nine. That's, I think, how he's calculating.
So you're talking nine spaces?
Well, if you, Jeff, is that, is that, I'm just, your plan is, is that?
That's effectively a yes, nine spaces.
Yeah, yeah, so you go one, two, three.
Okay. Four, five, six.
And you're talking the two in the garage?
One, two, three, four, five, six, and then seven, eight, nine.
So you're talking two, or two in the garage. Are you talking the garage on Forest Street too?
Yeah.
For a parking space?
There's one space.
Okay, so one space there, two spaces in the new garage you just built. And then you got six on the outside, correct?
That sounds right, yes.
Yes.
So I'm just trying to.
And you're not increasing the number of tenants?
No.
At all, anyway?
And then Jeff, do you have any problem with your parking now?
Not at all.
So I'm trying to, that's all I have to say unless you have any further questions.
Well, my only comment is that I did talk to my neighbor, that the four neighbors, there is one neighbor that lives right here. And there's another guy that lives over here. And then there's a woman that lives next door over here. Talked to those three people, they had no objection whatsoever. And I, I tried to talk to the guy that owns the building that Lenny's is in, and he didn't respond.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you for your time.
The next item on the agenda is to consider approving the 2020 meeting schedules for Borough Council boards and commissions. The schedules are pretty much the same as this year. For Borough Council, you will meet the first and third Wednesday of every month. Reorg meeting will happen in January. That will be on January sixth at 7:00 PM. So just note that in January, there is no work session. The first is actually a Wednesday and it is a holiday. So on, in January, again, will be reorg on the sixth, and then you'll move right into your voting session. The only question I did have for the council schedule is, for the last two years, you have not had a work session in July. And whether or not you wanted to continue that trend or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the only change that we made to the schedule that's in front of you this evening is that July first at 7:00 PM will be removed. Note that the Borough Council agenda list also has your special budget meetings already on there. So you'll be doing one advertisement for the year. Dog Park will meet the third Tuesday of every month. The EAC will continue to meet on the third Thursday of every month. Marywood Park Commission will continue to meet, continue to meet on the second Monday of every month. The Parking Task Force will meet on the fourth Wednesday of every month. And Planning Commission will continue to meet on the second Thursday of every month as applicable. These will be in front of you for consideration and a vote on December 18th for implementation in 2020. If there are any questions or concerns?
None.
Next item on the agenda is to consider approving a request for qualifications for the sewer system sale exploration. Again, this is a process of the borough doing its due diligence. The RFQ, again, is to consider a sale of a sanitary sewer system. It's to give you the information you need in order to make an informed decision on what direction you want to go in. The first step is a two-stage procurement process that begins with the RFQ, which is a request for qualification. A second step is then followed up with a request for bids. So the purpose of the RFQ is to provide prospective proposers an opportunity to formally express their interest in bidding on Conchakin's sanitary sewer collection and conveyance system. Again, you are evaluating your assets. So this is a first step in that process. It is a due diligence process. There are some dates in the RFQ that will need to be altered. But other than that, besides a final legal review by Mike, you will have a final version in front of you on the 18th for consideration. And there will be a representative from PFM there that evening should you have any questions prior to your vote.
And we'll have that a few days ahead of the 18th?
Yes, you will.
Thank you.
You most likely will have it early next week.
Okay, thank you. Just because it's the holidays and.
Understood.
Time is precious.
So this is just part of the process. It doesn't mean we're actually looking to sell.
It does not. In order for you to make an informed decision.
I want to clarify that.
You need information. You don't have that information now. In order to get that information, you need to go through this process like you've done with all other areas of operation. Okay? Any questions on the RFQ?
No.
Along with the RFQ, and part of the process is also needing to appoint special legal counsel. So the legal counsel handles matters specific as you work through the process of the due diligence, potentially working with the PUC, and all other matters that come along with the contracts and the potential sale. PFM in particular, Bob, is there something that?
No, no, I'm just.
Okay.
I need to ask a question.
The entity that you've selected to work with in terms of the RFQ is PFM. PFM works specifically with two law firms that works as special counsel. So again, this is not a decision item for this evening. You have to actually decide on your RFQ first, which you will do on the 18th. My question for you this evening is, how would you like to handle the selection of special counsel for this matter in particular, based off of the two firms?
I just got a question.
Yes.
We're talking about one, not a team, right? We're talking about one.
We're talking about one person.
That's right.
Which we would make.
Not a team, right?
Will, you will make that very clear if that is your wish.
That's my wish.
Okay.
You can, you can actually put it in your engagement letter that they will not delete.
My opinion, that's my opinion.
I agree.
The rest of the council can, you know, that's.
Yeah, I think that there's, like Mike just said.
I think bring four in and charge us for all four.
Yeah, but they, they won't charge us for three, that's what they say.
So again, an, an item of business that needs to be handled. In terms of how you would like to select a firm, is there a process that you'd like to follow? Do you want to interview both firms? Do you want to bring them both in?
I believe that that is our process that we should follow.
Okay. So we will schedule a date in the next month or so for both firms to come in for an interview, and then we'll do a selection.
Okay.
Okay. The next item is to consider approving Resolution 2019-27, which authorizes the disposal of records as recommended by your administration and is permissible per the Pennsylvania Municipal Records Manual. As you know, we have Tiffany Griffin on our staff who works diligently every day to update and maintain our archive room, along with our current files upstairs. Part of that process is going through per the municipal records manual and deciding what can be and what cannot legally be disposed of. In your Dropbox, there was numerous documents related to which items we are disposing of per municipal regulations. We need to formally vote on a resolution in order to move forward with that processing. Again, if you are so inclined, you would be making a motion to approve Resolution 2019-27, authorizing the disposal of records as recommended by administration and permissible per the municipal records manual, understanding that the cost is not to exceed $2,000, which is budgeted for in your 2019 budget. And it will be completed before the end of 2019.
Will that be, will that be an annual resolution moving forward?
Correct.
So every year we have to do a resolution specific to the documents that are?
Yes. So there's, there's lists that each department, they love this, but there are lists that each department generates of what documents specifically they are shredding, disposing of, and then those that are being filed and how we're moving forward with filing or electronic filing. So, yes, it is now a process that we follow.
Excellent.
Okay, I, I will make that motion. All in favor?
Go ahead and speak myself from that, right?
You do not.
I do not?
No.
Okay, then, go on.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. The next item is to consider approving 204 East Eighth Avenue Financial Security Release Number One in the amount of $30,336.30. Again, this was reviewed by your engineer. They inspected the site and they prepared the recommended ASCO release for approval by Borough Council.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is to consider authorizing the issuance of an RFP for consulting services for the Housing Rehabilitation Program. The consulting contracts for the program's intake coordinator and environmental testing service expires in March of 2020. So the contracts are, can be in place for three-year period only. In order to continue to operate the rehab program without interruption, it's necessary to re-procure the services in 2020. So what we are asking for tonight is authorization to issue an RFP for consulting services for the Housing Rehabilitation Program.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Next item in front of you is a fee waiver request for a Penn State THON fundraiser. We were approached by Penn State students who asked to hold a three-on-three basketball tournament at the community center to raise money for Penn State's dance marathon. It is student-run, it's philanthropic. The goal is to enhance the lives of children and family that are impacted by childhood cancer. So the request was to use the gym. They have filled out our application, they have provided the insurance. They are simply asking for a fee waiver. Administration is in support of this request.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is to consider approving a special event request, which is a Christmas parin, paranda. It is being requested by the Hispanic Heritage Association of Southeastern PA. The date that it is tentatively scheduled for, if so approved, is Saturday, December 21st. It starts at six, it ends around seven. The intent is to walk up Fayette Street. It should be no more than forty-five minutes. They are unsure of how many people to be, expect, but the plan is to meet outside at Second and to walk up to around Sixth Avenue. And the intent is that they will be walking and singing and playing music, so.
Doing the whole Fayette Street or just?
No, it will not be on the street at all. It will be on the sidewalks. And it will end at Jillian's Cafe.
And they're walking uphill, huh?
They are walking uphill.
Of God bless them.
Their choice.
It'd be easier for everybody who's playing musical instruments.
Okay.
Okay, I will make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Those are all the manager matters.
Okay. Do we have an update on, from Karen and Bob, on the Parking Task Force?
Sure.
Yeah, oh.
Pardon me? Okay, so as far as, are you okay?
Yeah, no, I thought, go ahead. I thought we got on a line here. I thought we got on a line. It's all right, go ahead.
No, no, this is, I was just doing the update first and then we'll do the line.
Okay, go ahead, Karen.
It's, that's how it's written for me, Bob.
Okay, so, so as far as the Parking Task Force, you know that the resolution was passed last October. And you, just to quickly run through, who is, the Parking Task Force is comprised of? We have Steph, we have Ray, we have Brian Keatney, we have Stacy Allen for planning, we have some resident business owners, and obviously Bob and myself that are part of it. So our duties and accomplishments, we had Brian Keatney conduct a study to determine inventory of, of where we have parking issues, where we have available parking. And then we've asked people that are part of the Parking Task Force to identify what they believe are the top ten parking concerns. And then along with that, we're looking for solutions on how to address those. One area that, I mean, we, we know that the commercial district, which is really Ward One, has the most pressure. A lot of it is everyday pressure. And now it's complicated so much more by the, the Sora construction project. So a lot of the folks are feeling that there. We've talked about some ways to alleviate some of that, in particular with the construction workers, their vehicles from, from being on site. And where can we put some of those or give them opportunities? Right now, we have a, a few things that we've talked about. Nothing that you can say unless there's been some recent updates.
I think it's important that council understands those three initiatives that were put in place by the Parking Task Force. So just to give you a brief update. One of the main initiatives that came out of the final meeting of the Parking Task Force for 2019 was a specific request to do some due diligence to find some alternatives for construction specifically. So the thought was that we would reach out to Ecliss, who has the vacant lot, to service some of the vehicles that are down there for the Sora construction. They did come back to us with a $5,000 a month fee, a $10,000 deposit, a need for a certificate of insurance and a license agreement. So as our administration, we did our due diligence, that was communicated. That was communicated to Intact, who is the contractor for Sora. The conversation hasn't gone much further than that, other than the fact that it is available. Those are the prices that were listed, those are the requirements. And depending on other options, we either enforce them and make them do it. And in turn, if we find their construction vehicles, if there's a way to identify those construction vehicles, we place fines, regulations. But that was requested, it was filed through with, that's the reality of the situation. The second option, specific to Seven Tower Bridge, so that side, was to reach out to Ray Weinman, who owns the plot of land that right now is vacant, that is actually adjacent to the other Sora, Sora East, with the thought that that land could be utilized for the construction vehicles for Seven Tower Bridge. We charged Julian Morelia with that task, since he has a close relationship with Ray Weinman. So far, he's had two conversations with him, there's been no movement. Our next step, based off of Julian's recommendation, is that we will work on setting up a meeting with administration and Mr. Weinman to see if he can be coaxed into potentially partnering with Seven Tower Bridge and Oliver Tyron Pulver Corporation to be able to utilize that space for a fee. And then the last option, which we were asked from the Parking Task Force to look into, was to utilize Seventh Avenue Garage and the vacant space around the garage. We'd have to make small renovations to allow for off-site construction vehicles, again, to park there. And then the companies would be responsible for shuttling their employees from that area to the location. So given the fact that that is the only option that we actually have control over, we've done some slight modifications to the site in terms of a gate and fencing and curb cuts. And given the fact that the location is not adjacent to the, either of the projects, the thought would be that the borough would charge $2,000 for use of that space, as opposed to what appears to be the $5,000, the going rate for empty space for parking. But again, this would be a change to that area, and it would require cooperation by the contractors. So is there any, from the Parking Task Force perspective, given that they are advisory to Borough Council as a, as a whole, are there any takeaways that you would like us to continue to work on, on either of those three options? And are you comfortable with the use of the Seventh Avenue Garage and the price that we would potentially go back to the contractors with?
What are you looking at, volume of cars for contractors?
We're talking about the lots, not, not around the garage, we're talking about the lot.
No, what are you looking at as far as volume of vehicles?
Ray, how many, how many employees does Sora have on site now? So sixty-five to a hundred cars, let's say?
Trucks.
So at what point, and we've had conversations, and I think it's probably late first quarter, where the expectation is that the garage?
Right, so there is, for Sora in particular, there's going to be a period of time when the garage is complete and the employees that are working on site will be able to park in the garage. But again, that is not in the near term, it's not a near-term solution.
Right. Can the lot at Seventh Avenue handle sixty-five to a hundred truck vehicles?
It can if modifications are made, which we would require some, some of the contractor to contribute to.
It's a big lot down, a lot of ground down.
And you think two grand is enough and not twenty-five hundred, split the difference?
Well, I think that the borough is not, we're not a for-profit entity. And I think that the $2,000 a month would cover the cost, most of the costs we would need to do in order to modify the space.
That's really what I was thinking, so, did you undercut yourself?
Yeah, if you look at the costs associated with the borough having to modify the space, the, the $2,000 per month would cover those costs.
And then taking it back to regular operations at the end of all of it, just factor in those dollars too?
Correct, well, I think the, the gate and the fence and those types of items are things that we've talked about before from a capital perspective. So those items would just stay.
Right.
They would actually supplement the operation there already. There is a component to all of this that we don't know what the traffic will be like and what the noise will be like. So, you know, I think from a borough perspective, it's an alternative that can be offered, but it needs to be monitored.
There is another lot available that we could look into.
Murray?
No, Moore's.
That's what I mean, Moore's.
You're Murray.
I'm Murray. It's empty.
It's an empty lot.
Most of the time, it's empty. Other, other cars and stuff have been?
You might get sixty-five up there, but my opinion on that building, it's gonna be more than sixty-five trucks and cars.
But it's, it's, it's not a big.
It's a big project, yeah, too.
It's a huge lot.
It's sixty-five right now, but we know that after they get inside.
Well, it's sixty-five, it's sixty-five right now for Sora. We're also looking at, you also have Seven Tower Bridge and then you're going to have new.
You gotta have plumbers, electricians, alarm people.
That's why I'm saying, we have that too, that.
Oh, I can see my street already.
Colleen, what do you think the, that's just something we should, we should approach them and ask them if they would be, is that?
If somebody would be willing to lease it for parking until it's resolved. It's a secondary space.
That's right.
Right.
The real estate developer, Profco.
Profco, yeah.
Okay, so, well, so for.
Go ahead.
For the Parking Task Force initiatives that came out, does everyone, is everyone on board with the request to ECLIS, the request to Weinman? We should consider, continue to pursue those options?
Yes, yes.
And then is everyone on board with the use of Seventh Avenue?
No. I'm sorry, I can't be. I'm already getting slammed from my residents up there.
But you'll be noted, that's all.
Why do we have?
You'll be noted, that's all.
Do you need a vote on that, or are you okay with one no?
It, since it seems like there's, I would say you should formally take a, a vote to document. So you have.
I can understand it, but there's so much more happening down in the expectation of what everyone has to cope with in that particular area. In my opinion, far outweighs.
So again, since.
I have to stick up for my residents, yeah.
Since the task force is advisory, I think that the way the processes work is that the task force is making a recommendation to you for consideration. If you're inclined, then you would take a motion on it.
So how long are we gonna, so we got the Cuny Town Lot, which they want a lot of money. It's probably not gonna work because it's so expensive.
I think that is in excess of the $5,000 that was requested from ECLIS.
We got Weinman.
Probably won't be.
He's a tough, he's tough.
Right, yeah.
He's tough. And so, my opinion, and I think Ray already started it down there, I think we should prep, start prepping for, it ain't gonna hurt for future, right? Put the curb cut in, and put the, the apron in, so it's it.
Yeah, that work's already been completed.
So we can be ready.
So. Well, I think, we, so because of the Parking Task Force, we are ready. We would utilize that for reasons other than just parking. So from our perspective, we had, we had operational dollars that could justify that expense. So that is in, it's ready to operate. It's just if council is inclined to take the Parking Task Force recommendation and move forward with that initiative.
I'll make the motion to take the recommendation for the Seventh Avenue Garage as temporary parking with the word temporary in there.
Okay.
I will second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay.
I didn't just say thank you.
And then the last item that the task force had to bring, recommended to bring to your attention was a resolution for Maple Street and parking, residential parking there in particular. So what was in your meeting materials was a draft resolution specific to Maple Street between West First Avenue and West Fifth Avenue. That area currently is not zoned for residential parking, residential permit parking. And this resolution in particular would make it a residential permit parking district. Like all other areas, the, you would qualify based off of your address and you would get processed through the borough, just like you are, you do all other permit, residential permit parking. It's just Maple Street, so you would, we're not drafting a new ordinance. You're simply supplementing the current residential permit parking ordinance that exists with a new zone.
And this is from First to Fifth?
What was proposed by the Parking Task Force was First to Fifth.
Can we send out notifications to those residents?
We should.
We did it for First.
So.
Would this be permanent?
It would be permanent.
I think we need notification.
So just, just being in the area, I'd recommend we cut it off at Third. So it's, it's really condensed from Elm Street to really Second or Third. But once you get to the 400 block and 500 block, it opens up quite a bit. And also, we have the, the church on Fifth.
Yeah, it would make it.
And they have day-long festivals and things like that, so we'd, we'd be interfering with the church. So I think we'd, we'd help the residents quite a bit, even if it was just up to the Third Ave.
I agree.
So the Parking Task Force was First, Fifth?
What I'm hearing from the elected officials is you'd like to limit that from First to Third.
Start there and see what that brings for relief.
And would that include like a two-hour, it would just be residential?
Just be residential.
So we would have to think about Guppies down there on the zero block? Cause they're gonna park somewhere.
They'll have to park on Fourth through Fifth and walk.
Should we still use the church lot?
The church has come down hard on that.
Really?
I mean, is a two-hour zone worth discussing?
But if it starts at West First, that would still leave the first block of Maple open for the restaurant, right?
But right now, that's saying, the public, how people wanna go there, they walk.
Right, they do.
Find spaces, go find a space.
It's like the city.
You know?
But we do have. But Harry does have, is it one hour or two hour? It's not just residential.
Howard is, uh.
One section has two hours.
So you do have the two hour there.
Like First Elm, put in that two-hour slot?
That'd be helpful.
Maybe something this one we may need to think about a little more.
Well, you're not, you're not taking a vote this evening. So this is a discussion point.
Yeah, let's just keep discussing that.
Yeah, also adding to that is maybe making some revision so that, we've had this a few different times where someone resides on that street, but they have an old-day babysitter, mother, somebody that comes in. And this is in particular to, I think, Second, West Second.
I remember.
And so the, the street is empty during the day. Everyone's at work and someone's getting ticketed in an empty street because they're not a resident there. So something, and I don't know the process of how we do that.
Yeah, the, the issue, the issue will be that, how do you disseminate between the nanny and someone who wants to, I mean, you could make the argument, someone could make the argument that their employee who works at a restaurant should have the same right as nanny, so that's a.
I think the, the resident that had the babysitter coming in was actually the resident that pushed the permit parking and then didn't wanna pay for it for the babysitter. So if I remember correctly, it came up at the meeting.
It sounds like this one needs more work and more discussion.
Okay, so it sounds like everyone supports the concept. We just need to, over the next two weeks, work through some issues with businesses in terms of two-hour zones. So if you can think about that, and it'll be on your agenda on the eighteenth for further discussion, potential vote. If you still aren't comfortable with it at that point, then it'll get pushed to January.
Okay.
Is, is the concern with Guppies more night, nighttime, after five?
Or night, yeah.
Okay. Cause, cause the, the issue with the construction is generally during the day. So you could do a, a residential permit parking that applies during the day so that those people don't park there, and then it could go away.
But that doesn't satisfy the resident, I mean, your, the residents are at home at night, so.
Well, right. But the concern.
They're not, their concern isn't just the construction. It's the fact that you have the commercial district and the, and the traffic from the restaurants is bleeding into where they needed to park for their residential needs.
Right, and carry their groceries several blocks, right, Ike?
Okay, well, any feedback that you have of the course in the next two weeks, please let us know and we'll, we'll, we'll put together a revised draft.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor Arrington?
Okay. So I do wanna give a, a thank you to everyone that made the Christmas tree lighting a big success. Yeah, well, I mean, we can all, we can all say thank you. I know Public Works and Ambox spent a lot of time setting up and planning. And I also, I, I don't think we knew about this, but there's lights strung all through Merrywood Park, which looks amazing, so. So I've been encouraging residents to get out there and check it out.
Thank you, Ray.
Yeah, it looks awesome.
Great child.
And then also, next Saturday, December fourteenth, the VFW is having a selfies with Santa from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. They're encouraging humans and pets to go for pictures. And I, I don't know if you've been in that second-floor room, but they decorate it and they make it into like this amazing winter wonderland. It's like awesome. And you can make a day of it by also stopping at our winter wonderland that same day at the community center from 12:00 to 2:00. Santa will be there as well, so he's got a busy day in the borough on the fourteenth.
That has a busy day in the borough.
Yeah, yeah, and that's it.
I was gonna have some for the chief, but he's not here, I'll get him next.
Okay, Anita?
I'm good.
Gina?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Fine.
Aaron?
So for December fourteenth, that's at the VFW. Is that the same day that the truck is going to find trucks?
He's all over from the hockey that day.
It is also the Reis Across America at the cemetery at St. Matthew's at 12:00 o'clock.
It's also the winter wonderland.
And Cavalry, yeah.
It's also the winter wonderland event at the community center.
They're already, he did, he added that in.
I must've missed that one. It's cause we're all tied here.
Oh my god.
The borough ones.
Okay, is that it? Any public comment? Oh, please, I'm sorry, please come up. State your nearest address.
Name's Scott Langstein, 200 West Elm Street. Just wanted to comment about the Maple Street parking there, that if you consider putting that permit parking, considering, I guess, Guppies, that's just gonna create, I think, more people coming into our lot on Maple Street and/or possibly trying to park in our lower lot and then walking through our property. So that would be my concern, is that you're then pushing more of those people. There's already tons of people that park in our lot and go to Guppies. So I think that would just create a worse situation for us. So just something to think about for that. And then my other comment was just around.
How do you address that now? Because I know that you have, most of your spots are numbered, and then you have some. So, so what do you do with those folks that are already giving that?
So right now, nothing. I mean, so, well, so, a couple of things. I mean, if the spot is numbered, those are reserved for owners. And so if someone parks in there that doesn't belong there, then those will get towed. If they're, you know, the process is a little complicated, you know, sometimes the homeowners don't wanna call because they're afraid if that person gets towed, then they're gonna get their car damaged when the person comes back. So, may not always happen, but that's supposed to, what happens is, if someone's parking in their spot, they're supposed to get towed. Then we have the white spots that are not numbered. Those are like open parking, visitor's spots. So anyone that's going, you know, going to Guppies and parks in those spots, you know, nothing is done for that. You know, unless they're parking illegally in our lot, you know, where they're parked, you know, in front of the parking garage or something like that, or just in a handicap spot, you know, unmarked. So then they'll get towed. But, yeah, it may force us to do some kind of permit kind of thing, or, you know, so for guests, you know, that they get a sticker and, and that anyone that doesn't have a sticker, then they get towed. Something that was talked about many years ago, but never went into place because it was just, we're afraid of the complications. And you know, what happens when, if a tow truck comes by the parking lot and, you know, someone's parents come over and they're going up to their, you know, child's unit and within those couple of minutes, you know, a tow truck comes in and sees that they don't have the sticker in their window, when they're trying to go get it, then, you know, dealing with those complications. So we may have to revisit that and see how, how to work that. If, if this goes into, well, if, whether or not this goes into effect, you know, I think, you know, just all the traffic flow going through our lower lot, that's also obviously a concern. obviously a concern that we're trying to address. Does that help for?
Yeah.
Okay.
It does.
The other thing I want to just comment about was the sewer authority, selling the sewer authority, I know it's early, you're just trying to get information, but I would just caution you about selling the sewer authority. You know, I was looking at the, the Aqua rate increase, the PUC documents, and my focus was just on the water rate increase, I was not looking at the sewer rate increases for municipalities that they took over, but I did see some, you know, I glanced through it and I saw, you know, the rates had gone up dramatically, and I just can't imagine for those residents where, I mean, their sewer fees went up huge. And multiply that by three hundred eighty-seven residents in our community, you know, our dues would go up significantly due to that, and I can just imagine a lot of people very, you know, a lot of people are upset. And so, I just really caution you about that, because they're a for-profit company, their, their focus is to make profit. And if the, you know, the sewer authority is being properly run and, and, you know, the infrastructure is being updated as it should be, and they're running a good operation, then, you know, I would employ you to leave it as it is, you know, that's, that's a good thing. And I understand you need funding for other things in the, the community and, or for the borough, and I just hope that you can find it from some other way, whether it's tax increases or, or bonds. I think there's better ways than selling the sewer authority, at least I hope there is.
So, we're exploring all different options.
And I get that, yeah.
And we'll price out what, you know, the PUC increase would be versus, you know, how many mills of tax increase, and you, you just don't know which way is gonna fall to be able to, to fund and to be able to have enough assets on the books to borrow what you need.
Right.
To get it done, so.
Yeah.
You know, we're just in, exploring all options.
And I get that, I mean, I just, you know, my personal opinion is just, I'd rather see a, a tax increase, I mean, I know everyone hates tax increases, but you know, if you're getting the services you expect, then people are happy, and, you know, I hate when there's a, you see, there's tax, no tax increases for five years, and then year six is a twenty percent increase because you never raise the taxes.
Correct.
It's, it's, and that's when you get everyone pissed off, you're much better off doing a one or two percent increase every year, because the reality is, costs go up, you know, you may be able to finagle with some of your contracts that you, you bring in new vendors, it's a cheaper price, or you, you know, you're able to get your insurance at a lower cost, but your other infrastructure stuff and your salaries, employees, that goes up, you know, benefits, there's no way around that, you're, that's gonna go up every year, and so the money's gotta come from somewhere.
You know, you just got a tax increase, right?
Yes.
You're a young guy, you have a lot of seniors in this borough.
Yep.
That's, that's, that's a crisis for that.
And I, I know, I, I, it's, it's hard, it's, yeah.
If you raise taxes, you know, you gotta raise them, but some, there's, there's just a lot of people in this borough right now.
And the fixed incomes, yeah, I get that.
Their houses are paid off?
Yeah.
When they get that bill and they gotta save all year to pay that bill.
Yeah.
You gotta look at it, bro.
Yeah, I know, but then when you're doing a twenty percent increase, you know, that hurts a lot more, you know, if you're.
I'm not saying never.
Right.
We never raised a lot of taxes in this town. Hopefully, we never will have to raise a lot of taxes, because that's why these buildings have gone up.
Mm-hmm.
You don't have the belt in, then you have to raise taxes all the time.
Right, yeah, that should bring in a lot.
There's still out there, look at all the stuff in this town. There's a lot going on.
Thank you. Yeah, there is definitely a lot going on. And hopefully, we all benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for a public comment?
Stand, John.
Meeting adjourned. Oh, he's coming up, oh, God, go ahead.
John, I was going to get your code, right?
I'll be quick.
Sorry, John.
Two things, Karen, you are correct, the fourteenth, fire companies take Santa around, so, yes, Santa will be very busy that day. And the other thing, for the parking, for the construction parking, don't lose sight of the craft that'll come in. All your carpenters, electricians, sheet metal guys, pipe fitters, plumbers.
Lunch trucks.
Lunch trucks, the craft will be twice or three times as much as the, as the maintenance supervisors, so.
Thank you, John.